All right, it's 5:30 PM here on Wednesday, April 18th, 2023. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular Board of Education meeting. Do we have a roll call, please, Tammy?
Kendra Osnes, here. Jaclyn Gremler, here. Maria Volby, here. Brett Waller. Linda Yingling, here. Paul Prue, here. Chad Krieger, here. Ron Liberty, here. Kevin Blake.
Next on our agenda is listed as the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask everyone to do things a little bit differently this evening. Momentarily, when we stand for the pledge, I ask that we all join together in a moment of silence in remembrance of Aiden Greifey and Dakota Brown, the two Merrill High School students that recently passed away. After completion of the moment of silence, I will lead us in the pledge. So please stand as you're able and join me in that moment of silence. Thank you. You now face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Good evening and welcome to Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all attendants. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is the opportunity for public comment to the board. I did not receive any slips, Tammy, did you? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to board recognition. Tonight, the board would like to recognize George Wildy. When we asked Principal Heather Sobert for some insight on George, she shared that I wanted to thank George for the exceptional efforts he's made in going above and beyond in his role as a school custodian, his hard work and dedication to keeping the school clean and safe. It's truly appreciated. George's attention to detail and willingness to go the extra mile has not gone unnoticed. Whether it's dressing up as a lead server for the students' fancy lunch, performing in skits to help reteach expected behaviors, helping out with dishes in the kitchen, or quickly addressing any maintenance concerns, his commitment to making our school a welcoming and comfortable environment for students and staff is truly remarkable. George's positive attitude and friendly demeanor is a joy to be around, and he has a positive impact on everyone who comes into contact with him. His willingness to help others is a testament to his character and professionalism. On behalf of the entire Kate family and our school Board of Education, I'd like to express the gratitude for your outstanding work. Thank you for your exceptional dedication and for going above and beyond in your role as a custodian and truly embodying the spirit of excellence, and we are proud to have you as part of our MAPS team. Stand in the center over here. Thanks, George. Next on our agenda is the recognition of an outgoing board member and welcoming of the new. So tonight, as we mentioned with the recent spring election, you know, on the agenda, we want to say thank you to Maria. While I was thinking and preparing for this, there's many things that I could say about Maria. And I'm sure we can kind of go around the room, but I'd like to just be nice and summarize things and just say thank you, not only for your hard work, your dedication, your willingness to speak your mind, and bringing your ever-smiling and joyful, not to mention trusted sidekick and friend of the board, our honorary board member, Sophia. So before the three of us gather for a picture, yourself, Sophia, and I, Shannon had a quick story to add that we kind of reminisce from the start of your superintendency, right?
Yeah, how about Maria, though?
No.
So I wasn't here the evening I was approved for hire. I was at the National Honor Society induction, but I was told that after a motion was made and seconded, they took a vote for ayes, and Sophia, from the back, voted aye. And I think she was the swing vote.
So we'd like a picture with you.
Picture with you. You could run this meeting, right? You have the absentee, you can do that?
We're our honorary board members.
How awesome. What do you say?
Thank you. They make us all smile.
She'll be back in 10 years.
Probably sooner. Tammy, you want to take one just for the two of us?
Oh, sure. You, you, come here. Next to me, you can get close. I don't bite, you know that? I love you. All right, thanks, Tammy. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I, a little bit. Just, I, no, I'm just grateful because I've had seven years on the board. I have made just unexpected wonderful friendships on the board. I'm very proud of the work that we've done. It's not always been easy. We've made some tough decisions. We've made some great decisions. Being on the board is kind of a thankless job, but I don't think anyone is on here to get a pat on the back. It's because everybody cares about the community and the district. So congratulations to all of you for what you are going to be doing in the future. So I wish you well, and I'm just grateful for my time here.
Thanks, again. As I mentioned, recognizing Maria, starting next week at our organizational meeting, we will welcome back Norbert Renovas Ashbeck. So on April 24th, we will bring him back onboard, and we will go from there. At this time, we will go to the Student Board of Education representative reports. Isaiah and Brooke are here. Each other one would like to lead us off?
I'll do it this week.
All right.
It is with a heavy heart that our first report is one of sadness and heartbreak. This past weekend, Merrill High School experienced a tragedy, the loss of Dakota Brown and Aiden Greifey. Although there is not much that I can personally say on this topic, it is of high importance that each person takes the time to educate themselves on the situation currently being faced by our community. With that being said, I, as well as all of the students and staff at MHS, would like to give a big thank you to Mr. Murray and Mrs. Baker for making themselves available for those struggling. Although with the support of Mr. Murray and Mrs. Baker, there were 10 additional people with varying backgrounds brought in to help support our student body as well as members of our staff. Along with those wonderful people, a therapy dog was brought on site as another form of comfort for those who needed it. Due to all of this, the decision has been made to reschedule the pre-ACT to a later date that has not been made official. I know that, I know that was a lot, but it is important to us at Merrill High School that everyone is equipped with the resources they need to be able to heal and progress through this difficult time. The National Honor Society will be holding an induction banquet on May 1st. This is a very exciting event for those having the honor to be brought into such a great club. Our school started April off strong with Prom being April 1st. This was a beautiful night for all of those able to attend and participate. With Prom, as you know, there was the crowning of the 2023 King and Queen. This year's Prom King and Queen was Bobby Hoff and Brooke Rudey.
Merrill High School's presentation of Fiddler on the Roof will be this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. The cast has been practicing diligently for months to memorize their lines, dances, and songs. They're excited for the opportunity to get onstage in front of an audience and show their talent. The Skills USA State Competition is coming up at the beginning of May. This competition will be happening in Madison and is a great chance for students to show off their unique skills in the form of a state competition. Maddie Crossman also broke her school record and a personal record for the 200 meter at indoor conference last week for track. She won first place in the conference and also broke her previous personal record by .6 seconds. She's very happy to be putting her name up on the Merrill High School Record Board and hopes to break more records as the season goes on.
All right. Thank you, Brooke. Isaiah, any board members have any questions for our student board reps? Thank you for the updates and congratulations, Brooke.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is administrative reports. Just as a reminder, board members have asked some questions, and if you want to ask any additional ones on the, on the record and for clarification or for your own knowledge, now would be the time to do so. I'll turn this section of our agenda over to Superintendent Murray. Shannon?
Thanks. First on the agenda for this part of the agenda is the Director of Curriculum Instruction Report. Glenda is here this evening for her report of Systems of Investigation Review and Staff Perception Survey. Are there any questions for Glenda this evening? Seeing none, next, MB, is the Pine River School Free Young Leaders Monthly Report. Mr. Martinovich is here. His report covers a variety of topics as it relates to Pine River School. Any questions or comments to Mr. Martinovich? The Food Service Participation Report has been provided by Laura Zastrow. She's not here tonight. And next is the Director of Special Education Pupil Services Report, focused on Narcan Availability at MAPS. And Karen Bader is here this evening. If there's any questions for her. The Valium's Grounds Transportation Update, provided by Dale Bergman, is provided. Has an attachment here. Dale is not here this evening, so if there were any questions, I would give it my best shot or hold it on hand. Did I miss HR comments? No, I did not. And then last is the Superintendent's Report. There are two things that I'd like to highlight there. First, we have shared with you the key communicators group that we are starting. That group has met. The first core group of 15 people participating or joining that core group. The goal now is to expand that overshoot for about 100 people involved in that group. And so as, by way of wider key communicators group, is people that are interested in being knowledgeable with accurate information from the district that are willing to share that in the circles that they lie in. So that's, that's off to a good start, and I think we got the right people onboard. I look forward to that calling. The other thing is we, I reached out to officials from the county and the city of Merrill, and we had our first meeting as administrators to kind of just sit down and talk about community issues. We talked about education, of course, for the housing, childcare budgets, as you might expect. And so we're going to continue that meeting monthly and try to look at things from a holistic viewpoint. So that was very positive. Renee Krieger from the county, Don Frisky, Kevin will be joining me next time, Steve Haas, the mayor, and Cory Bennett as interim administrators. So that was very productive. So we begin May, and that was, that was a kind of a nice start to that. So any questions or comments on that?
I think it's communication that needs to be done. We are one family here, and the best way to keep everybody involved is those kind of things.
Yeah, it was interesting how the issues that we talked about impact all of us. So that's, you know, childcare, housing, or education, workforce development, all those things. So it was, it was really timeless, man.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda, we will start with the committee reports. We'll start with any questions for our policy committee attached for the draft minutes from the March 13th committee meeting. Paul Prue is chair, and additional policy committee members are available for questions. Any questions for our policy committee this evening? Hearing none. Certainly, thank you. There was a lot of work done on all committees, but that one was certainly a lengthy meeting as well. Next is the Finance Human Resources Committee. Draft minutes were provided from the April 12th committee meeting. Any questions for Finance HR Committee?
I have a couple of questions for the substitute teacher, Kate.
Okay. Go ahead, Glenda.
So, as far as I know, you guys said we weren't going to be making any changes in that we do have the shortage of subs, and that seems to be all over the place. But are we still utilizing the student teachers as well?
We have, I believe it's one currently.
One. And what rate, and is that treated like a sub teacher, or how does that work?
Dr. Strick, come on.
So I think what you were referring to is a long, like, we have hired long-term subs basically to be a full-time sub. That's what you're referring to, which we did for last year. We offered one this year for the remainder of the year for a student teacher. So when they come, they come on site, they're going to be sub here every day versus the call-in sub. They get a rate that's a little bit higher than sub, but less than long-term. Unless they fulfill a long-term sub, they would get a long-term rate like anyone else.
So those folks are available to us district-wide, so the assignment may change, but they're available to us every day, so there's certain areas needed.
Yeah.
Well, I got, I mean, to me, I guess a student teacher is different than a substitute, I suppose. You know, because they're still learning, they're still going to school, correct?
No, these would be student teachers who've completed student teaching and have not found employment.
So then it's kind of like a, oh.
So they are long-term, like, we hired them for the semester, basically, because sometimes it's hard for student teachers to find employment in the middle of the year. So we've hired, last year we did the same, and this year we did one as well. So they, they're done student teaching, they're now officially being a teacher, and then we hired them just to be long-term subs. Basically, they're sub every day.
Wow. So like, I mean, I understand, like, you might have commented about the retired teachers coming into sub, and there's a, an issue with...
There's limited number of hours they can work for retirement purposes, yeah.
No, I mean, if we were to maybe the sub pay do the same as the student teacher pay, would you think you would be able to acquire more of the subs to come in and help us out if it was equal?
Well, there, I guess the one thing is they're not a student teacher. It's, it's like hiring a, we chose to, like, basically hire an everyday sub, so they're, they're under a, they have a half-term contract with us. So we've done that with the student teachers for the semester in a short-term, not a long-term situation. I would tell you that our rate, when we looked at, we pay the highest, actually, in the area. There's a couple districts that are getting closer to us with our rate.
I was just curious if, you know, maybe that was upon us, I don't know if this is the right word, slap in the face to some of our people that would love to come and sub, but are not, are getting treated differently than a student teacher sub kind of thing? You know?
So I think the difference is being on-call, like, the subs are available, they can pick jobs as they want, versus when we hire for the semester, they have to report every day, and we put them, like, it's a commitment, or an everyday commitment, which we can't offer that type of employment to retirees because of the limit of hours.
And our majority of our subs retirees, or?
I don't know that I'd say majority. We got, yes, probably some of our regular, yes.
Okay. And then the reason for the retirees is because they're getting that benefit that would...
They're limited to the number of hours they can work, and they collect on retirement, yeah.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenda. Any additional questions for Finance Human Resources Committee? Chad?
I have one on the coaches and whatever. Do I understand they're going to stay at the rate they are this year for next year?
Yeah, so that's actually the agenda I'm coming up.
Okay.
Yeah. If you're okay with that.
All right, that's mine.
Any additional questions for Finance Human Resources Committee? Next then, we have our Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, or CTP Committee, attached for the draft minutes from the April 12th committee meeting. Maria Volpe is chair, and other members of the CTP Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for our CTP Committee members this evening? Any questions for our CTP Committee members? All right. Hearing none, next on our agenda is unfinished business. We do not have anything categorized as that, so we'll go right to Board of Education Business. Our first topic this evening is approval of the Federal COLA Supplement and Quality Improvement Funds. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich with a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the 2023-2024 Head Start Federal COLA Supplement and Quality Improvement Funds.
Motion by Paul.
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic or this motion? Any questions or discussion on the topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is modifications of the 2023-24 MAPS School Calendar, attached was a topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray and a recommended motion from the CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the modifications of the 2023-2024 MAPS School Calendar to best meet the needs of the student, staff, and community.
Motion by Maria. Do we have a second?
Sorry.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2023 Summer School Academy Program Course Description Book. The topic summary sheet was co-authored by Heather Carr and Brad Potter with a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the schedule's course offerings and registration materials for MAPS Summer School Enrichment 2023.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any discussion or question on the motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Elementary Student Handbook for 2023-2024. Topic summary sheet was co-authored and submitted by Principal Amy Stetstream and Principal Heather Sobert, and a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend the approval of the 2023-2024 Elementary Student Handbook.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second? Second by Maria. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of a Washington DC and New York City trip for 2024. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Principal Diane Gage and staff members Jolene Weix and Hazleigh Benel, with a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the 8th grade Washington DC, New York City trip for June of 2024.
Motion by Kendra.
I'll second.
Second. Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the relation of the content filter for a security internet safety filter solution, attached was a topic summary sheet provided by Andrew Kahler, with a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to, move to approve the security replacement content filter and the $51,480 for internet filing service through, internet filtering service, I'm sorry, through the 2025-2026 school year with costs coming out of the '22 and '23 IAT budget.
We have a motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Maria. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a printer purchase for the graphics department. Topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strick and recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a printer for the graphics department for up-and-running solutions.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Chad?
Is there a price associated with that? Because we shouldn't just, otherwise we're kind of opening up a blank check.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yep. In the budget fiscal impact, you'll see the value is $18,995, but after a discount and a trading of an old printer, the actual cost that would be paid is $9,995. It's coming out of three different sources, Carl Perkins, the district tech head budget, and then the student Blue Jay Designs activity account. It'll be a joint effort.
Yeah, friendly motion, I have to add that to it, the motion.
Amendment? Are we all right with that, or do you want a formal amendment?
Should amend it, probably.
Okay, we'd like an amendment to add.
The ninth.
The fiscal impact of the, of the breakdown of the $18,995 happened trade-in, and the rest, approximately $9,995 from Carl Perkins, $3,000 tech head budget, approximately $18,8923 in the Blue Jay Design Activities account, approximately $51,0577. Chad's motioning for that amendment. Do we have a second? Second by Maria. Any questions on, on the amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? And we will go to the amended motion. All those, anyone have any questions on the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Raise Your Voice Advisor Pay. That topic summary sheet was provided by Shannon Murray with a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Jaclyn, did you go first? Okay. Finance HR Committee, I move to approve the Raise Your Voice Advisor Pay, three positions at $1,000 each for the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Jaclyn. Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the first reading for staff handbook. Next item on our agenda is the First Reading for Staff Handbooks for 2023-2024. Topic summary was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike. Anyone have any questions, question or information? This was discussed at committee level, but this was no action tonight being a first reading. But if anyone had any questions, discussion, or insight, we could have that right now. All right. Thank you. We will bring that to next meeting as a second reading. Next on the agenda is Benefit Renewals. Attached, topic summary sheet was about the Benefit Renewal summary. We'll start with the Long Term Disability or LTD and Short Term Disability. Those topic summary sheets were provided by Dr. Kelly Strike with recommended motions from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone like to make a motion, beginning with long-term and short-term disability? Maria?
I move to approve the renewal contract with standard for long-term disability and short-term disability insurance for the upcoming year contract with a second-year rate cap as presented.
Motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion on that motion or this topic? Any discussion, questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra? Next on our agenda is Voluntary Benefits. Attached was another topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike. Recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
I move to approve the renewal of both the Dental's Vision Plan and the Guardian and Spire's various offerings as voluntary benefits for fiscal year 24 as presented.
Motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra abstains. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Delta Dental and Vision Insurance. Topic summary by Dr. Strike. Recommended motion Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the Dental Insurance with no change to deductible rates and Vision Insurance at 0% increase with Delta Dental for fiscal year 24.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra abstains. Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Health Insurance. Attached to the topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike. Recommended motion from Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
Move to approve the renewal of the Health Insurance with Aspirous Health Plan with a 1.9% increase as presented for fiscal year 24.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Maria. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Kendra abstains. Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is the Athletic Coaches Compensation Plan. The topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Strike. A recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion this evening on this topic? Paul?
Move to approve the Athletic Coaches Compensation Plan for the 2023-2024 as presented.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this topic? Chad?
Yeah, just to be clear that the way I read it, there won't be any increase in pay for coaches next year?
That's correct. So our coaches' salaries or wages are based on a percentage of the base wage. A month or two ago, we did the ledger reductions. We voted to move people through the scale, but we changed the base wage. So yes, the coaches pay it for us.
Thank you.
Any additional questions on the motion or the topic?
I do.
Go ahead.
Maybe I've been told this before, but I can't remember. Who divvies out the pay for each of the coaches? Does the head coach decide what the assistant coaches get?
It follows the schedule as presented.
It does now. Okay.
What's penalty time? It was different. Some years ago, we went to this model.
I thought so, but alright, thank you.
And I think, so let's say that there would be a deviation and someone wanted to split a position. So if you wanted to be a halftime coach or get paid half, and I wanted to get paid half, that could go through a process and be approved, but otherwise it sticks to the scheduled price.
Alright, thank you.
Go ahead, Chad.
Hey, what happens if you're not a MAPS employee? How do you figure it out then?
Same thing. It's based on that 41. The number's on the top of that chart, 41727. So if you're not an employee, it's still based on.
Oh, that, okay, okay. I got you now.
The purpose of bringing this is really twofold, right, speaking for Kelly. One is that we haven't done this a long time, and we wanted to, it should be brought from the board annually. And secondly is the change in the way. So we had a hard time. It was a percentage of the whatever. So we switched it to a quarterly so that maybe we could have multiple people do it and not split it up in the fashion that you were describing.
And we reduced by coaching positions, remember? So that reflects in this as well, like from the number of coaches and the number of assistants. That's been reduced. I made notes on there where those reductions were done, so that reflects the last time we approved as well.
Any additional discussion? More questions? Or are we, Kelly at the table? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the Youth Apprenticeship Positions for 2023-2024. Attached topic summary sheet was from Dr. Strike and the recommended motion from Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening on this topic? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the new/revised youth apprenticeship positions as presented.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I know this is after the fact, but it just popped in. Where does the grant come from? Like, where do we apply?
Yeah, so it's the Department of Workforce Development. And so we get an allotment per student from the DWD that completes youth apprenticeship. So it's a rolling grant. And the number varies slightly every year per student, but it's pretty steady.
Do they cap it?
No.
Okay. So can be as many students that wanted to per district?
Yes, except for, it's gotten more rigorous over the years, so we can't turn our students in because there's expectations of employers and the student and hours and criteria that have to be checked off through the process. So it's pretty rigorous. I think we're right for a school, I'd say right here in that point.
Okay. And the dollars, like the students get, like for themselves or whatever, whatever is through the grant always? Yeah, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Three questions. Thank you, Jaclyn. Next item on our agenda is the First Reading of Policy 5250 Programs or Curriculum Modifications. This is a new policy. Our Policy Committee does have a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve, to align with state statute. I'm sorry. My cold's got me going. Motion to approve Policy 5250 Programs or Curriculum Modifications as a first reading.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Do we have any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic for this particular new policy?
I did this on the first reading. How come we motioned this first reading, not the other first reading for the handbook?
The other one we did first reading.
Yeah, but we didn't make a motion for it.
No, that's different.
There's no action at this time.
Policy with a, I'm not sure. I'll turn to Tammy on this one. Normally on a policy, you do have a motion twice. The handbook, though, we weren't. So help me out.
For new policies, it comes to the board as a first reading because it's the first time that you're seeing it collectively and you're approving it. If it's a policy that we've had before and there's just revisions to it, it can get away with just a second policy. I'm guessing the handbook is just a first glance through, but it's not policy per se.
Yeah, traditionally, they've done a first and second, I think, just because of the content. They just wanted the opportunity to view it.
So Chad's question is, why wasn't, why do we get one on it?
I just, it just seemed weird that we didn't want it, not the other one.
Right.
I don't mean to be difficult. It seems odd that we just see one first reading.
It's a good question. I even, I committee said, normally you've typically done a first and second read just because of the content of it. So I mean, I said, you know, this is what it is, and so I just went with kind of what you've done. I wouldn't say there's significant changes in the handbooks this year, but maybe because of that in the past, you wanted to have a month to soak it in before you make that conclusion.
Yeah, when we went through it, Chad, I guess we looked at it from a policy standpoint versus something that was new versus something that was corrections or additions. So you're right, we probably could have done that consistently as well. But when I asked, I thought we were all right in this manner. To be consistent with what we had done, maybe not consistent for the evening.
Yeah, Paul? Do we have a facility or vehicle to now make the motion to approve this and waive the second and third reading, or do we have to go through the second and third readings?
I believe we moved to the.
You can waive it.
You can waive it on the.
No, I moved to waive the second and third readings of Policy 5250 and pass this as a completed modification.
Consider that an amendment, or he was the author. Do we have a friendly amendment? Which way would you win the amendment or the separate?
Because you made the motion, I believe it can be a friendly amendment. But Chad would have to.
And then Chad, are you all right with that?
Yeah.
Any questions to clarify what the friendly amendment or update was to that motion? Any additional questions on the motion or this topic or the new policy for that matter? All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Technical Correction Made to Policy 9800 per Bylaw 0131.3. Superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have been adopted through normal rulemaking procedures. And superintendent shall inform the board of any such changes at the next regular board meeting. As part of the regular review process of policies at the March 8th Finance Human Resources Committee, Policy 9800 was noted, needed a technical correction, and that's being brought in front of us tonight. It's the consistency of changing the words Board of Education to Board as an example. So this is that awareness piece of bringing it to the board. Next on our agenda is the Aspirous Merrill Hospital Donation for Curriculum Implementation. There was an attached cover memo from Karen Baker as well as a donation form due to the fact that the donation is over $2,500, the limit set in Policy 7230. This donation comes to the board separately for an approval. There is a recommended motion from our CTP Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Excuse me. I move to approve the donation of funds from the Aspirous Merrill Hospital daily at $6,500 for S L Committee Review of Curriculum, participate and conduct trainings, review appropriate lessons for each grade level to personalize lessons for students, and communicate with building level staff about implementation of the curriculum.
Motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Any discussion on this motion or this topic? Any discussion or question on the motion or topic? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is Personnel Report. Covers hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements. The attached personnel report was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike with a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
I move to, excuse me, I move to approve the attached personnel report contingent upon the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations if applicable.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Maria. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Chad?
I see that some of these are externally posted. I thought we were internally posted everything first during the last meeting.
On the layoffs and the reductions that we're doing, the budget reductions, the Director of Pupil Services is a pretty specific licensure and skill set. So we're doing internally and externally now.
Okay.
The other two were internal first without applicants and one external.
Nobody applied for the 10-month secretary, Chad?
We did internal and then go external if we can't find. So in some cases, we had no applicants, or after we go through the process that we find maybe we don't have an applicant that aligns with the job description, to go external, but we always go internal first. The pupil service wanted to go directly external. Everything else went internal first with.
But we notified the internal.
Yes.
Staff that is posted, and we encourage our internal candidates to apply for them. All staff are in there.
Okay. So the 10-month went internally and then nobody applied or qualified for it?
Art went internal, no applicants, went external. So I think that's on there as external as well.
Which one was it?
Art.
Okay.
And then Spanish, you'll see there was a transfer there, which ultimately resulted in opening up Spanish, but we got no other Spanish candidates. So then after the transfer, the always left went external. Actually, we have one other internal candidate who said they're not interested, so we went external just to see.
All right. Before you go back into the audience, just in case you have any extra, any extra discussion or question? Maria?
Just a question, kind of piggyback off of Chad's side. So if internal candidates meet all the criteria, they are given an interview?
Yes.
Okay. They just have to meet, but everybody is that meets the criteria?
Yeah, we have that.
Then it has applied.
Right. And I don't, if we ever get a situation where we have, I will say like if we have 70 people applying, we might have, do you know what I mean, if that happens, right? Like we might screen internal if we had like several applying, but thus far we have certainly. been.
I'll let her get to her seat before I ask more questions. Any additional questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Really hoping we had one to get our steps in, but no. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Will we ask for that motion? Does anyone want anything pulled out of consent agenda to be acted upon separately? Since there's a lot in there to review, I'll ask again, does anyone want anything pulled from consent agenda to be acted upon separately? Otherwise, I'll ask for a motion on the consent agenda, please.
Maybe my last one.
Would you please, Maria?
No, not a problem, this one's fine. Motion to approve consent agenda items A through D, which includes second readings and approval of revisions to bylaw 0100 definitions, bylaw 0175 association, association memberships, policy 2210 curriculum development, policies 3215, 4215, use of tobacco and nicotine by professional support staff, policy 5200 attendance, policy 5330 administration of medication emergency care, policy 5340 student accidents, illness, concussion, and sudden cardiac arrest, policy 5410 promotion, placement, and retention, policy 5512 use of tobacco and nicotine by students, policy 5517 student anti-harassment, policy 5771 search, search, say that, I can't translate that, search and seizure, policy 7434 use of tobacco and nicotine on school premises, policy 7440 facility security, policy 8405 environmental health and safety program, policy 84, 8420.01 epidemics and pandemics, policy 8600 transportation, and policy 8800 religious activities and observances, minutes of the March 15, 2023, March 29, 2023, March 30, 2023, and April 12, 2023 meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $3,872,561.65 and donations totaling $9,089.
And a motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. I will call for abstentions at this time. Ron?
I'm abstaining from the March 15th, March 29th, and March 30th minutes, meetings.
All right, any additional abstentions?
I abstain from the April 12th minutes.
I'm going to abstain from March 15th and April 12th.
Maria?
I will abstain from March 15th, please.
All right, Jacqueline?
And I will abstain from April 12th.
All right, thank you. Motion carries with the noted abstentions. Next on our agenda is items for future meetings. As you know, the purpose of this agenda item is to identify any of the topics that you want to keep front of mind or perhaps have come to light either in our community or as work, as we thought of some of the work we've done on committees. Does anyone have any items for future meetings that they would like to mention this evening? Linda?
Yeah, I do, and I'm hoping we can get in on the organizational meeting, and that's to possibly look into the virtual option for board members in case emergencies or medical necessities that we're able to be here virtually because of certain circumstances.
Kendra, you got that captured in there or tanning? Any additional items for future meetings?
Shannon, I guess that one with the coordinate events, that should be a good one for a new little group that you got made with coordinate events with the city.
Yeah, I will come to a full concession, or confession, we have a homecoming conflict or involved. And I know that that's, that's about, like we talked with Dan, but yes, we're moving after fall because that was scheduled, it's already set athletic wise, so, yes.
Any additional items for future meetings? All right, thank you. If you have additional topics for regular board meeting or special board meeting, contact Mr. Murray or myself. If it's for committee meetings, we will certainly contact committee chairs accordingly.
I'm sorry, I just gave my mind and I can't afford, but we've talked about this at one point in time, and I'm not sure where it might have been. Getting junior achievement back in the schools, I don't know where that landed. Maybe it just goes on a future, or I don't need to put you at the spot right now.
I don't, I don't know if that has to even come to the board, junior achievement. We, we lost our advisor, and just haven't been able to find a new advisor. And then I'm not sure about the community side of that, there's a community rep as well. So we can certainly have that discussion, I think that needs to go on the board.
Sure, it's just before I leave, I'm just going to be on the thought. Okay, thank you.
I think it is a good point to bring it up this time of year versus wondering where it's at the start of next year in September and say, oh, we don't have one where now we could be actively recruiting somebody hopefully. At least to have it in front of mind.
I think that's about the tier position. I'd be happy to.
That's something to put on like CTP, just to, I mean, so it stays fresh.
So it's already in our program.
I mean, just a, just a special note, maybe to bring up there just to that, just that expression here, so everybody might, even though it doesn't have to come here.
Right, that would be good just to keep it.
I think we have it settled.
And just even a refresher at that committee level is if there is a, a staff member and a community member, that's a partnership around them, how that works. Any other additional topics or items for future meetings? Otherwise, next on the agenda is a reminder of the radio program schedule for tomorrow morning, 8:15 a.m. on Blue Jay Radio. I will be on there unless Vice President Volpe would like to speak tomorrow.
Oh, no.
No? Okay, all right, thank you, I think. Future meetings, the safety committee meeting is going to be held next on Monday, April 24th, 12:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. There's a special board meeting and organizational meeting also Monday, April 24th, 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Facilities committee meeting is Wednesday, May 3rd, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board next meets on Thursday, May 4th, 12:45, they meet virtually. Special board meeting on Thursday, May 4th, 5:30 p.m. in the boardroom. We have Head Start Policy Council is Tuesday, May 9th, 5:30 p.m. Pine River School Freedom Learners. Our Finance Human Resources Committee next meets on Wednesday, May 10th, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Please note that time change, 3:30 p.m. for Finance HR, followed by CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services on that same evening, May 10th, 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. School Force Advisory Committee next meets on Monday, May 15th, 4 p.m. out at the School Forest. Our next regular board meeting for the month of May will be held Wednesday, May 17th, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Next on our agenda is a contemplated motion for closed session. There is no need at this time to go into closed session, so I will not ask for that motion. I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Maria. Do we have a second? Second by Chad. All those in favor of adjourned at 6:30 p.m. signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for your participation this evening.